It's nice, we're good.
Okay, good morning. Welcome to Delaware County Council Meeting, June 22nd, 2021. It is nine o'clock here in the Delaware County Commissioners' courtroom. I'll go ahead and call this meeting into order, and if everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Jane, you want to start us?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Questions from the public may be directed to countycouncil@co.dellaware.in.us. We're going to continue with that as we try and get back to normal. I have added to this month's agenda, public comments down at the bottom. So, as always, you can reach your county councilman at their emails address, which are posted on the website, call them directly. We're available the other 29 or 30 days of the month to answer questions, and that's really the best way to get ahold of us. We will also continue to stream these meetings as the technology will allow us to. Today, I guess we've got an issue with an Internet connection that it won't be livestreamed today, but it will be recorded and posted later. So, roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Thank you. Steve, Denise, was the agenda posted?
Yes.
All the advertisements made for the meeting?
Yep.
Thank you. Let's see, we need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion on that from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And I need an approval of the May meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Lassiter, second from Piper. Any questions, corrections, changes? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, we've got an ordinance for first reading. Brad, you out there? Okay, there we go. This is an ordinance authorizing Delaware County, Indiana, to issue its taxable economic development revenue bonds and approving authorizations and other actions in respect thereto. Ordinance number is 20, let me confirm that, 2021-016?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and this is the can pack?
Can pack.
Can pack, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm Brad Bookout.
Let me get a motion and a second on.
Okay, apologies.
I'd entertain a motion.
Prove.
Second.
Motion to introduce from Quakenbush, second from Piper. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I keep this real short and sweet. This has been presented to you twice now previously, been before the county commissioners, been before the Economic Development Commission, thank you, Jessica, and been before the Planning Commission, headed to County Redevelopment Commission this Thursday. All unanimous approvals to date, all good positive comments, all the way around. So, pending any questions, I ask for your support today.
Any questions from council? If not, roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Might as well stay right where you're at.
I'm not leaving.
The next one we have is a second reading of an ordinance. This would be for approval. Ordinance authorizing Delaware County, Indiana, to issue taxable economic development revenue bonds. And this is the one we need to make a correction on, is that not?
Yes, we need to amend the name of the company. It is now LGF Properties-Muncie LLC. That appears in the first paragraph of the ordinance.
I'll move to approve as amended.
Second.
Boot to amend first.
I'll move to amend.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from, was that Ballard? Okay, all right, any discussion on that? And that's the only change that was made?
That's the only change.
Okay. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And now I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Ordinance 2021-015.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Any discussion on that? Brad, you want to say anything on that?
Yeah, same song and dance on this one. We've been through the process, we've been through the motions, presented to you twice. We really appreciate your support and cooperation with the economic development projects we're working on. Rachel Gradner, representing the project, has flown in today just for this meeting, too. So I'm going to let her have just a minute to share any updates on the company.
Brad, again, Rachel Gradner with CBRE, representing Living Greens Farm. Nice to see you all again. I'll keep this brief, as I know you've had a couple of discussions on this. First and foremost, I want to thank Brad and his team and Tracy for working with us throughout this process. Thank you for your consideration on this. It makes a huge impact on this company's decision to locate here. They are going through their due diligence process on the building and would look to start construction in the fall time around October. So, assuming all goes well, they would expect to be operational starting in end of 2022, beginning of 2023, and fully ramped up by end of 2024. So again, thank you.
Any questions from council? Brad, is everything moving along like it should?
Everything's moving through very, very well. Rachel has been fantastic to work with. It's been a pleasure working with the company, and so we're excited to see their progress advance.
All right, no more questions from council. We'll have a roll call, Steve, please.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
I'm going to get my computer bag and carry it out of here this time, so I don't have to walk back in in the middle of your meeting.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, and we are on to transfers, financial, and addendums. Donna, you want to start with the transfers?
Commissioners, 173 health insurance, minus $60,000, 324 telephones, plus $60,000, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Any discussion on that? We had Ron and Jane at the Finance Committee. You guys have anything from Finance Committee? Okay, all right. We will move on. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Assessor, A106 Personal Property Associate, minus $2,000, 198 part-time, plus $2,000, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. James asked us not to give you a hard time today.
Did he really?
He did. He really did.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
But it's never stopped us before.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Circuit Court, C146, minus $12,451, D146, plus $12,451. C147, minus $16,513.50. D147, plus $16,513.50. B165, minus $15,243.23. C165, plus $15,243.23. A168, minus $12,248.10. B168, plus $12,248.10. Total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Discussion from council? Anything you want to say, Emily?
Yeah, good morning, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. So we have some, a lot of changes going on at Juvenile Court, juvenile probation. That B1, or sorry, the C165 should say Court Secretary. And I'm asking for that to be changed to that line, that name changed that line, because it was, we had two juvenile probation secretaries. We're changing one of the juvenile probation secretaries to a court secretary. We're reassigning some of the duties and just trying to make more efficient work with what we have. So you'll see later on, I'm going to ask for some part-time money for probation. We're replacing one of the probation secretaries with just a part-time person, because we've got a unified department. We're going more toward a unified department. So we'll have three secretaries between the two departments and then a part-time person. So we're not asking for a new line item, we're not asking for a new employee, we're just, we're shuffling, kind of shuffling some things around to make it more efficient. And then the rest of it is just because we're losing a person. We've moved, we've lost a couple people, we're moving people around, so I'm just changing, I'm just going to be posting all these jobs today. I do have a job description for the Court Secretary that was approved, if you want to see that. Pretty much what they'll do is a lot of the administrative tasks from probation that was handed to the probation secretaries, they've taken on a lot of those things, and then they'll back up the court as they need it. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
Could this department move out to the new building?
No, juvenile is still out at Juvenile, or YOC campus. So probation, CASA, and court is still out there at the campus.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Coroner, 198 part-time, that's been reduced to 5,000. That would be plus 5,000. 311 autopsy, minus 5,000, total request zero.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Lassiter, second from Piper.
This was reduced at the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Ron.
With the stipulation that they may need more money later on.
What I was getting ready to ask, how are we in that autopsy fund?
Autopsies are okay, we're around 110, I think. It's the part-time that's low, since we've had so many cases.
What do you foresee autopsy-wise? Well, I guess you can't foresee that, but account-wise, because we always run low in that account, you know what I mean? At the end of the year, worries me taking money out of that.
So we decided on 5,000, because Newcastle Correctional Facility owes us about 3,500 for prisoner autopsies. So that will kind of break us even for that 5,000.
We're coming close, anyway.
It'd be close, we'll put it back into autopsies.
So is the 5,000 just to add to the fund, the part-time to cover wages, or is it for like a new employee?
No, just to cover our deputies that go out on calls.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
EMS, A117, minus $21,375.67. The next one should just say B117, plus $21,375.67, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. You're just refilling a position?
Hopefully. That's the plan, yeah.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Family Support, A102, minus $32,198.76. B102, plus $32,198.76, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Discussion, or questions from council? Want to say anything?
No.
Okay. I think we found out in Finance Committee, was there more shuffling of employees?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
My boss took my deputy prosecutor, so I have to replace that person.
That's right, okay. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jail, A135, minus $20,062.50. B135, plus $20,062.50. A106, minus $24,501.60. B106, plus $24,501.60, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Prosecutor, but I have a question before I read this. It says 103, minus $22,199, and you're transferring it into A109?
Hmm, I didn't catch that.
I just caught this today, so.
It's 103.
A103?
Mm-hmm.
I was going to say, that just didn't look great.
No, it isn't right.
So that's just, A103?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why we didn't catch that the other day?
I just caught it a second.
I may have turned it in that way, though.
Okay, 103, so I'll start it. Prosecutor, 103, minus $32,199, into A103, plus $32,199, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Any questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Lit prosecutor, A119, minus $32,425.38. B119, plus $32,425.38, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Questions from council? Anything you want to tell us? Okay. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Addendum transfer, Auditor, 118, minus $15,137.65. A110, plus 977.35. A118, plus $14,163.0, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from council?
Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Public Defender, D153, minus $13,500. E153, plus $13,500, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, I didn't, it was a second, where was the second? Ron, Quakenbush, second from Quakenbush. Any discussion? Questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Treasurer, C103, Head Bookkeeper, minus $14,052.06. D103, Head Bookkeeper, plus $14,052.06. B106, Assistant Cashier, minus $13,025.32. C106, plus $13,025.32. A107, Assistant Cashier, plus, or minus $12,835.68. B107, minus $12,835.68, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Questions from council? Anything you want to tell us on that? No, everybody's quiet today.
I was saying, no one wants to talk to us today.
Well, just for everybody's business, we, or everybody's interest, I guess, we talked about this in Finance Committee meeting, so these are just some changes in the Treasurer's office, moving people around. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Jail, C108, minus $969.65. D138, minus $454.98. B102, minus $23.13. B141, minus $370.30. D111, minus $56.50. 226 uniforms, minus $5,000. 393 school, minus $4,000. And the total of the two lines for overtime is a plus $40,874.56.
Move to approve?
Oh, wait. There's more on the next page.
Oh.
And 224 inmate meals, minus $30,000, total request zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Quakenbush, second from Piper. Any discussion on that? I think you probably want to tell us what's going on.
I have moved money from everywhere I can find it. This is just enough to get us through overtime through the end of July. I am coming back to you and asking for an appropriation next month to try and get us through the end of the year. As you can see, the number of people in the next page and page after, we just keep, as soon as I get them, they leave. I had one I just turned in today, he lasted one day. So it's just a revolving door right now, which is forcing us to pay overtime. We also have people that have turned in their notices, but we have to pay them out. Some of them aren't done till August, so I can't hire anybody, which is forcing overtime. The sheriff has put road deputies in the jail, which has helped with the overtime situation for the jail, but it's not getting it, so.
Do you know off the top of your head what the total overtime paid to date is for this year?
The total overtime, no. This last pay period was just shy of $9,800 in just overtime in the jail.
And this is the budget after this, it's pretty much everything for the year, right? We've already passed that.
I had $2,000 left, because I had moved money again last month. There overtime for this last pay period was $9,000, so I was $7,000 in the hole. It's just, I'm hoping that what I'm asking for next month will get us through the end of the year. If we can just keep people hired is the problem. The other issue is we're not having anybody apply. We have six current openings. We had one person apply, so.
And if you did hire someone, how long would it take before they could be useful in doing what you need them to do?
Takes anywhere from three to four weeks for them to get through their entire training packet. I mean, they're still usable. They're filling the spot. They're just with someone else the entire time on the floor. With the new control rooms, all those panels, it takes a little bit of time to learn all that, and then for them to be on their own on the floor.
The population in the jails not changed a whole lot, has it?
I think this morning we were around three hundred, so since we've moved into the new jail, it's slowly increasing, just gradual, slow increase. So it's about three hundred right now.
Sheriff, what do you, what do you expect to increase from the agreement with Madison Count?
Not much. Maybe, maybe four, six, I, I don't know, not, not much. It won't be significant at all.
Any more questions from counsel? You guys will, just to let everybody know, you guys most likely will be back for an appropriation out of general fund next month for overtime.
Right. I'm going to continue to look as, as spots and move money every time I can from a pay line, but it's never very much, as you can tell, twenty three dollars, three hundred dollars. So I'll continue to look, but.
You're going to have to ask for appropriation because you're going to transfer back the thirty thousand into meals.
Right. I have to put money back in inmate meals.
Put that meal money back.
Yeah.
It has to go back. So at least that has to go. But I can't come up with nine thousand dollars for every payroll.
So the meal money, you're just borrowing.
Yes.
With the expectation of it has to go back at some point.
Yes.
So, and to answer, I think to answer your question about how much overtime money, basically, we've spent, our budget for the whole year, I think, was about ninety three thousand, was that right? So we were, we were through the entire year's overtime budget in the jail by the end of May, before May was over. So, you know, I mean, we're looking at, easily at two hundred thousand bucks this year, just for overtime in the jail, and that's, that is just the minimum staffing requirements. That's just, I mean, the minimum. You know, people are getting their vacations canceled, they're getting days off requests canceled, and they're, quite frankly, they are getting burned out.
That was going to be my other question.
Burned completely out. There are some times people are getting forced in too, and, and it's even happened where the same person's been forced in to work overtime three times just in one week.
You think you'll be able to hang on to your core guys until they can get this fixed?
I don't know. We hope so. You know, that's what, like Nancy said, retention is the key. So, you know, we're working on it.
Everything you hear and see as you drive around or listen to the news, it's, it's not just correctional officers.
It's everybody.
Problem everywhere.
Everybody.
It's, it's interesting, there's like nine million jobs open in this country right now.
Yeah, I mean, Scott talked about it at finance, you know, there are restaurants closing early, there are restaurants and businesses not opening on weekends because they're understaffed, you know, and we are just, you know, we're just part of the problem. We're, we're a symptom of that problem. We're not, we're not the problem, we're a symptom of that problem.
I'm glad you corrected that.
Yeah, me too. Thanks. I knew that didn't sound right coming out.
You inherited part of the problem.
Yeah, Ryan, the reason that we, sheriff called, called me up this month and had them go to the right, the reason we borrowed from, they needed this money so they wouldn't run out and not be able to pay out the overtime, in, in hope is that next month we'll reimburse that, but also, you know, allocate some money to overtime to, to help out with the, the problem. It's not the problem.
Right.
Right? Okay.
To clarify, Donna, the original federal money coming in was transferred into the general fund, the balance of that from COVID.
Yes.
So we do have.
The CARE Act.
We have money from CARES Act that we can appropriate that won't affect what was approved from, for this year's budget, which is a positive.
Right. Thank you.
You guys, you guys have an amount, or a rough amount, that would hopefully get you through the end of the year?
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Just to give you an idea.
I know you, you emailed us something, I know we're not discussing that just yet, about moving forward on pay matrix. Is this, you're talking just overtime, not to address the retention of getting new corrections officers, wages that, that could attract those people. This is totally different, right?
Correct. This is, that's apples and oranges, yeah.
Do you do any kind of an exit conference or questionnaire as to what the reason they're leaving?
The, the, the majority of those, of those people who leave, or like she said, when they get hired, this last one, he showed up the first day and he never came back. And most of them are pay related, but like I said, in finance, you know, we had one person leave last month or this month because of health reasons. We had another one, we had to let go because they drank too much, you know, and liked to show up to work. So there are other reasons, but what we hear too often is pay.
So if somebody was watching this video when it's posted, they would obviously go to the HR, or do you apply online? Do you go to the human resources to apply?
You can go to HR, you can go to the new justice center. When you walk in the front doors, if you turn left, we actually have applications hanging right there in the hallway.
You can still do a physical application.
They can fill them out, and they can bring them right to our office. Yeah.
Can they get them online? Are they available online?
No. I did want to make a comment, Ron. We are sending out exit interviews to everyone that has quit in the county, and we've gotten, and we even send out, they don't have to give their name or anything like that, and a self addressed stamped envelope, and we've gotten one back. So I don't know what the answer is. I mean, we want to know why they're quitting, and obviously it is the money, but we're not getting any feedback.
You know, with a lot, a lot of businesses, they will actually have like an in-person exit interview.
Well, these people, I know we've tried that, and once they quit, they don't want to come in. We've tried that too.
Could you like to pick up your final check and do your exit interview, or is that directed positive?
Then you got to go through the auditor's office, and they don't, the checks go right into the checking account. Or to their account, so that's not possible. But we are trying to figure out, but people's just not responding. I'm sorry.
So just to get this correct, so the budget, I was looking at our budget book for this year, so we had eighty five thousand budgeted for 2021, and you think you need an additional hundred and thirty to get through the rest of the year?
Plus they'd transfer it into that.
Okay.
Correct. And they've already spent ninety three thousand.
Okay. So that's, that's a quite significant jump from what was budgeted, so, okay.
Absolutely, it is.
Yeah, it's over double.
The whole year's budget before the end of May.
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, don't get me wrong, the move was part of it, yes, because we did have a lot of overtime to be able to get everybody moved in that two day period, but.
Right.
Nowhere near what this is.
Right.
Taking in.
Thank you.
Been last year, if you remember, total?
I think we ended up moving maybe thirty thousand more in over and above the budget, so maybe a hundred and fifteen thousand last year.
Because you were eighty five for 2020 as well.
Well, I was going to say, you moved in, I mean, last year, there was, there was, you moved in a lot.
At the very end, I moved money in.
Over, over the?
Yeah, any, any monies that were left on pay lines, or clothing allowance money we didn't use, I tried moving that over so we would not run short.
Still, you only used a hundred and thirty thousand for the year, and you're already there half a year.
I'm there and over.
Need another hundred and thirty, so it's going to be.
And understand, part of that money is what I'm putting back into the food budget, so that's, that's part of it.
Yeah, but you're still spending it.
I know. I know.
Whether you pay it back or not, you're still spending it on overtime. And then it adds into the total, it's, it's.
Any more questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Jail Loewit, 105 minus sixteen thousand seven forty six oh five, A 105 plus sixteen thousand seven forty six oh five, 108 minus sixteen thousand one oh two oh five, A 108 plus sixteen thousand one oh two oh five.
Move to approve?
Request zero.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
These people that you've retired, you've hired, or are they being posted?
Well, these people.
These two positions, are they new hires, or are they just being posted?
Well, I'm hoping they're new hires. They're sitting, they're going to. The problem is that these openings are on the Loewit side. I'm not short overtime money on the Loewit side.
No, I didn't mean you're short, I just wondered about the turnover. You do have warm bodies to put in these positions at this time.
No.
No, you're going to post it.
Yeah, we're trying to get them. I mean, she's.
Well, that was my question.
Yeah, no, we do not have anyone. She had two people lined up to try and get them finished with testing, to get them hired immediately, but if it's like the last guy that shows up once and then gone.
Any more questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
A financial agenda. I don't know how to read this. Commissioners, it was advertised out of the ARP, American Rescue Plan, says at eleven twelve, but it should have went into three ten, commissioners, two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty five dollars and thirty three cents, total request two hundred and fifteen thousand five fifty five thirty three.
Think we're going to withdraw that, and the expectation is that we'll bring that back to next month meeting out of the general fund?
Yep.
Is that your understanding too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you're withdrawing that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
COVID-19 GIS, two eleven supplies, two thousand nine hundred dollars, three eleven contractual services, three thousand six hundred dollars, four forty one equipment, eight thousand five hundred dollars, total request fifteen thousand.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Go ahead, Kyle.
This is kind of the final grant from the Ball Brothers Foundation to help support our COVID response activities. They kind of did a large grant to a lot of the, the public safety and health organizations in the community to try to help get us through with whatever we might need in terms of equipment or supplies for the current kind of ongoing, finishing up this pandemic hopefully, and to make us so we're able to respond better if something else pops up, you know, in the future. So I like to kind of publicly acknowledge and, and share our appreciation for our local foundations. Since last year, they provided forty seven thousand five hundred dollars to my department emergency management to help offset the expenses that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to, to do with all our COVID communications and supplies that we've purchased.
Thanks, Kyle.
Yep.
We need a.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Now, we did get a motion entered.
No, we need roll call.
I have a comment.
Motion by Jessica, second by Jane.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ron.
Oh, hang on, hang on.
Oh, it's been a, this is maybe going to embarrass you a little bit, but a couple years ago, I had a, just made it a point to have a personal conversation with Kyle. I was concerned, it was probably around budget time a couple of years ago. I've always been impressed by his performance and integrity and loyalty to the community, and I was afraid we were going to lose him. And at the time, he assured me that he liked the community and wanted to stay here, and I really appreciate what's been done by moving him into this position. I think that, that your destiny was there at the time we talked, but by moving you into this communications, whatever your title is, has kind of given you a, a attaboy or a pat on the back for what your loyalty is to the community. And I just wanted to let the community know that he's a good person, he's been around a long time, since he was a young guy. He's getting a little gray now.
Twenty years.
But he's, he's been really loyal to his community, and I appreciate that.
Thanks, Ron.
Any other questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Sales disclosure, two twelve, that should say Form 11, supplies, four thousand one hundred and fifty eight dollars, total request four thousand one hundred and fifty eight dollars.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Webb. Any questions from counsel? It still applies.
Very much.
You're welcome. Roll call, please, Steve.
For the best.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Adult user fees, one ninety seven, part time, five thousand, total request five thousand.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Questions from counsel? Emily, anything you want to say on this?
This is that part time money we're taking out of adult probation to cover that secretary that they're losing.
Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Family recovery court grant, 101 program coordinator, one thousand seven hundred and forty seven dollars, A 101 program coordinator. Wait a minute.
Yes, I'll tell, I'll explain it, I'll explain, I'll explain it. Yes, we can. I'll explain it. Keep going. Trust me. Keep going.
Nineteen thousand two hundred and eight dollars, one seventy one FICA, two thousand three forty seven, one seventy two PERF, one thousand six hundred and three, one seventy four life insurance, twenty three dollars, one seventy five LTD, STD, one hundred and fifty dollars, total request twenty five thousand seventy eight dollars.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Webb, second from Piper.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So our court reporter that we're losing out at juvenile court was part time court reporter, part time family recovery, family recovery court coordinator. So we paid half of her out of a grant, half out of county general. We've split that job and made this a full time grant position. This grant ran from July 1st to June 30th. So the, the first 101 is to pay her out from July to when she leaves, because we have to pay her until she's gone, because the grant ended June, June 30th, so this is appropriating her July 1st monies, right? So from the time that, then we have to hire a new person full time, that's the A 101 that we'll post. That's why we have two, okay? So we are going to fund this as fully grant. If we lose the grant, we're done, we won't have FRC coordinator. But we've talked to the state, and they said this will be funded for as long as they have the program. We have gotten the, the grant from July to December, they're going to switch it to a calendar year, so they've already given us the money. I have appropriated enough to get us through the end of the year for everything but health insurance. We don't know if the person coming in will need it, so I didn't appropriate it yet, but I do have enough funding left in the grant. If we need to appropriate, I can appropriate funding for that. So everything I'm appropriating today is for the benefits and the, and the pay for the new person that we're going to post this for, full time grant, and then the person that's currently there, the half time grant, to get her through until she leaves, which is July fifteenth, it's like the middle of July. Does that make sense? I do have a new job description that was approved by Pam for the full time family court, family recovery court coordinator. That's just, that's all they will do. So I have everything. If you guys want to see a copy of that, I've got that as well.
What will the actual annual salary be?
Annual salary is forty, it's like forty five thousand. I, I think it's forty five thousand four, let me tell you, I can tell you, hold on. It's in there, stuff.
That's excluding FICA and all that stuff?
Right, that's just salary, it's forty five. Forty five thousand four hundred is just salary for the full year. Of course, this is just half the year, less than half the year, July to December. So we will apply for another grant in the fall to get us through 2022, to start 2022. They want to go on the calendar year, which is fine with me.
Does that job description require a college degree?
Yes. Do you want to see a copy of it?
No, I'm, I'm.
Okay. Yeah, they have to have a bachelor's degree.
You mentioned that if the, if you, the grant didn't come through, that the position would just go away.
It's going to go away. Yeah, I don't know what they'll do if we don't have that position, because they're, this is a problem solving court for juvenile recovery. It's kind of like the adult. Huh?
Employee go away, or do you find a new role?
No, the employee goes away. We don't have anybody for that. But the state reassured us that this grant money would be there, because we said, look, it's really hard to find somebody to do this position as a part time grant, part time court reporter, because that's a lot to learn. So we're going to separate it out. Are we going to have grant funding? They said, yeah, you'll be fine. Go for it. So we're relying on the state for this money at this point, and there's federal funding out there, too. So that person will also have to find grants, right, kind of like what CASA does, what Ashley does, to fund their position. So they'll be doing their work plus finding grants.
There's an incentive to do your job right there.
Right.
We have a few positions that are a hundred percent grant funded, so if the grant's gone, that, that job's eliminated.
Yeah.
So it's not completely unique.
And CASA has three, five positions now that are like, three or four positions that are like that now.
Quite a few.
Yeah.
It's something that are partially grant funded.
Mm-hmm. She's got three that are totally grant funded. So, yeah, she'll be, the person, whoever, he or she, I can't say she, will be having to do the grant work with it. So they're going to have to be well versed in grants as well.
Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance 2020 dash zero one five.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
I don't think we have any committee reports at this point. Any department heads or elected officials? Come on up. Can't imagine what you're going to talk about.
Good morning, counsel. Molly Hunt, Delaware County Purdue Extension. I am here today to introduce the newest member of our Purdue Extension team, Shaylee Ledbetter, joined us in June, on June 1st, and so she is serving as the Assistant Health and Human Sciences Educator in Delaware County. So I just wanted to share that update with you and the new face that you're going to see serving the residents of Delaware County.
Welcome.
You want to tell us about the fair while you're, while you're up there?
I sure can. I'll try to provide an update. Andy's doing a great job getting ready. The Delaware County Four Age Fair will run from July 7th through the 18th. While it won't look like Fair 2019, we're hoping to host as close to a normal fair as possible. We close to a normal fair, um, as possible. We are, um, obviously, our volunteers and youth, um, as well as our educators are no longer required to wear, um, face coverings when, um, outdoors or indoors, so it will be business as usual there. Um, and then I invite you all as well to the Indiana State Fair from July thirtieth to August twenty-second. So hopefully, I'll be here in a month or so with the little envelopes that I usually have. Any questions?
Let me ask you this. We're, won't it be business as usual?
You know, um, I feel like the last kind of, we submitted a safety plan. That, that's the newest thing, or the thing that we're gonna continue to do for now. So we submitted a safety plan that just encourages social distancing. Um, so, um, X-ing out some of the seats, maybe in the bleachers, some regular announcements, asking people to, to socially distance. Um, it's, if you've been in like the swine show or something, like, it's really crowded. So I'll appreciate a little bit of extra space here or there. So it's just encouraging people. We will not be enforcing, um, anything. Folks have free will and the decisions that they're able to make surrounding their personal healthcare choices and whether or not they want to attend a large event.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Well, and traditionally, it's hot during the fair, so you probably want to stay away from each other anyway, and.
Stinky. Stay away from the manure and the sweaty folks that are out.
Exactly.
Do you want to, uh, to talk about the Fares Cares?
Well, I'm not actually familiar with that, Jane, so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
State Fair is having, it's, uh, Second Harvest Food Bank, Fares, Cares, County Fair Drive. Um, let's see. If you bring, if you bring an item to Heartland Hall, the first twenty people gets tickets to the State Fair.
Cool. I hope they have us the tickets before then. I hope they know.
Jane, Jane's got some additional flyers, too, that, um, that if you don't have one or would like one, uh, feel free to pick one up before you take off, uh, out of here today and pack, and pass them out. So, thank you for all your anticipated work.
Do you expect the, uh, participation to be kind of what it usually is as far as the four-H?
Yeah, yeah. Our enrollment numbers are down slightly. That's been statewide, the trend. Um, the only county who actually had increased enrollment numbers was Union County, which is one of the smallest counties in Indiana, which is interesting. So, um, our enrollment numbers are slightly down, but they were on par with all other, um, enrollment numbers of extracurricular activities. So it was about a thirty percent decreased enrollment rate, which is the same that you saw, um, in soccer, other activities, um, and, uh, some national reports on youth involvement, um, alliances said that would, could be expected. So this October, we're gonna reramp up. Our open enrollment will begin October one. So the hope is that with the loosening restrictions and life going back to however it was, um, that we're able to get back into the schools as well, because we feel like not being able to engage with the schools hindered a little bit of our, um, our outreach efforts. So we tried, um, you know, paper and virtual outreach efforts, but that face-to-face is really what gets the kiddos. Having either the big kids in the classroom or the educator in the classroom doing the demonstrations and that sort of fun stuff is really usually what hooks the kids, so.
Well, there are a lot of competing things going on in a shorter summer than, than what it used to be
Yeah.
years ago. So, um, so keep, keep the work up.
Yeah, so we were able to have a face-to-face overnight four-H camp at Campire grounds, and our Delaware County youth were able to participate in that. And so they really looked forward to that. And I know it's, um, Andy McCammon, our, our four-H youth educator, it was his first time there. So things are going good, and I just want to say thank you to the council for your continued support and encouragement of our activities and outreach in Delaware County.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to share, I enjoyed your annual meeting drive-through picnic as well, so.
Yeah. Did everybody get goodie bags? Did the office remember to drop them off to the rest of the council members?
No. I was, I was hoping to attend, but I had to work. I couldn't make it. I was hoping I could make it there, but.
We, we have, um, bags in the office if you want to stop by on your way out. Um, that has our annual report in it, our local and state annual report. So we'd love to share that with you guys if you want to pop in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And on the back of the program, you'll see that, your names are all listed as, as supporters, as the county commissioners are, because we need, we need that support from the county. Donna does a great job in coming up with money and spending our money wisely. Uh, but hopefully, we can get some money back from this, from the recovery fund. We've gotten some back, haven't we, from the CARES Act?
Yeah, we've got two PPP loans for our, um, payroll. But if we could get some money from the lost revenue, we lost a dog show, we lost the, um, the fair, of course, was our big one. Uh, and anything we had booked, we had to cancel. So appreciate your support. It takes everybody to make it work. So thank you.
Well, I also want to give kudos to the Fair Board, folks. I attended the Queen Contest last week and two weekends ago.
Two weekends ago. Um, and that was a great program, and it was a great kickoff to the County Fair coming, which, if you guys know me, I'm like super geeked about the County Fair. So I was very excited about that. It was a really great.
That's the only change.
Really great program.
Any other department heads, elected officials, okay?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
For one reason or another, I tend to watch the wheel tax distribution worksheets. June first, twenty twenty-one, total was two twenty-one, six eighteen fifty-seven for all the county and cities and towns. June the first in twenty nineteen, it was two hundred and eighty-three thousand, four sixty-nine, so. And, and for Delaware County, county roads, it's down from one sixteen two to ninety thousand eight. So during that year, we lost some money for our road tax also. Whatever we call that here.
Okay.
Twenty twenty.
Also, any, any of us that are going to the, to the Friday, we have to have this for the hotel, so we don't pay our taxes, I think.
Yeah, I need that.
Yeah, I need one.
We'll have to get that.
I have a question of Mr. Hughes. A letter from the Town of Yorktown president, Rob Kiesling, popped up on my computer. I, uh, about Yorktown chase trail allocation, redevelopment commission of Yorktown. I, I don't understand the letter. Did you get it?
No.
The TIF reports, I think, is what those were.
You get them every year.
Well, I don't, what's, what does that mean?
Just letting you know that, um, they're only gonna collect on the portion that's
Okay, well.
I have to read it again.
Help me out sometime. I, I don't, I just don't recall seeing it before.
Yeah, that, you, you have to get them every year.
Well, I'm sure we do. I don't understand what it means.
I know. We have to, I don't know why, but we have to, council, you guys don't do anything with them, but.
I think, I don't know what, I'm not sure what you have in front of you, but I think those are the TIF reports, and it's basically letting you know that there's no excess
Yes, thank you, Scott. I couldn't think what I wanted to say.
In those TIF, um, areas.
It says, send email to Donna, sent to council, six eight twenty twenty-one. I.
Yeah, we received, I think, another one from, um.
Okay, thank you.
Other, one of the other groups.
So I'm still confused, but it's okay.
Is there any action that we need to take on that, or?
I have a little, uh.
Okay.
I wanted to, uh, say, obviously, a lot of folks are, are aware, um, of passing this week of Kirk and Deb Mace, and want to extend our condolences, uh, to their families, and, uh, you know, prayers and thoughts are with them.
Anybody else from council? Okay, any, uh, public, anybody here to make a public comment? Go ahead, step up to the mic and name address.
Rick Yenser, out on five hundred West. Um, former newsman, author, been around here about a half-century. Came to my attention that, uh, local government isn't paying attention to what the federal government said about stimulus money. It wasn't, uh, shovel money into, uh, shortfalls or other spending. It was to help the people. And I think you all need to remember that there are still people that are fading. Uh, they, they can't pay the rent, um, they have utility issues, there's hungry and homeless, and of course, your governor has pulled the plug on unemployment while people are still out here trying to get a job. I think it would help if local government spends a little bit more time looking at the people in need as opposed to, like the city did, spending on big corporations' institutions, because that is not the intent of the federal stimulus money. And, you know, there are a lot of people watching, because, you know, last year during the pandemic, the county raised utility rates, raised taxes, all these other governments and school went on building sprees. And frankly, a lot of people, whether they be homeowners, business owners, farmers, they're tired of it. So just remember, spend it on the people in need.
Thank you, Rick. I agree.
Anybody else?
We have no comments coming in through the email address, and obviously, since there's no live stream, there's nothing on Facebook as well.
Okay, any, any other business for the good of the cause? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion for Piper, second from Ballard?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thank you all.